Richmond City School Board Budget Work Session. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Stewart. Ms. White.
Present.
Ms. Gibson.
Here.
Mr. Young.
Present.
Ms. Rizzi.
Here.
Dr. Harris Muhammad. Ms. Burke.
Present.
Ms. Page.
Present.
Ms. Jones.
Here.
We have a call.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We will start, and I don't too, budgetary items, discuss the superintendent's proposed FY24 budget. Mr. Cameras.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and good evening, Board members. I would like to propose that we go through each of the remaining items on the list of proposed items for the budget to determine if there's consensus amongst the board members to move forward with including those items or not, or any other adjustment to them. We began that work at our last meeting. And so if, if I may, I would draw everyone's attention to the document that is uploaded to Board Docs called FY24 Budget Consensus Tracker. I'll wait till that gets up on the screen. Excellent. So I'm going to go straight to Slide 3, which is the first substantive slide. This is the first bucket, the teacher and staff compensation increases. Based on our conversation at our last meeting, I came away with the impression that there was board consensus to move forward with all of the elements in this section of the proposal. There was also a request by the board to consider the decompression of office associates. We did some quick calculations to estimate what that might cost. Comes out to about $550,000. And so my first question for the board is, is there consensus to include this or not? And we will adjust the proposal for your consideration accordingly.
Ms. Young.
I mean, thank you, Madam Chair. I mean, at the risk of belaboring the point that I think has been articulated time and time again, absent something come to fruition that I don't think anybody in this room anticipates will materialize, we shouldn't expect superintendent's budget or his proposal to be fully funded pertaining to our friends on City Council and/or the mayor's office. So at the risk of just adding on pertinent to tilting at windmills, perhaps, perhaps that's a conversation for subsequent budget discussion, i.e., an outlier year. I mean, my two cents.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Well, Mr. Cameras, I feel that that's a consensus to proceed.
Understood. All right, I am turning it green. Thank you very much. I'm going to now move to the next bucket, which is the student wellness bucket. Three items here, the crisis support team, the additional social workers and other wellness staff, and then athletics. My best interpretation of our last conversation and previous conversations is that there is not consensus to move forward with the crisis support team. So I will remove that from the proposal going forward. And then, to the best of my understanding, I believe there was consensus to move forward on the other two items. Again, would like to re-verify that with the board.
Ms. Gibson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a question. So the board took action at our last meeting to to streamline the responsibility of the of school counselors and, I believe, social workers. I'm wondering if there are any budget implications that need to be included to to address that, that direction.
I would want to take a minute to confer the relevant personnel to bring a thoughtful response to that. So if the board would indulge me, I'd love to bring back a response to that on Monday.
Thank you. All right, thank you. Any other discussion? Yes, Ms. Jones.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just had a quick question on saving the positions currently funded by the ARP, which is three social worker, social work positions. And then to the wellness policy of the addition of social workers. Essentially, we'll be, we'll be moving three from the ARP positions to operating budget and then adding additional five. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Young.
Thank you, Madam Chair. To Ms. Jones' point, recognize that perhaps this evening, we don't have the bandwidth to discuss. If it's our intent to during A, it probably don't have the opportunity to discuss in any meaningful way the ARP budget. But a question for the superintendent regards if we will have an opportunity on Monday evening and what that chronology looks like to discuss the ARP monies. Or, or better said, the budget.
Thank you, Mr. Young. We were not planning to do a full presentation on the ARP on Monday just because there was so much else on the agenda, not the least of which is tentatively the approval of the budget. So planning for that, the first meeting in March, where we would, you know, go through all the latest. I do want to note, we have done, I would argue, a pretty exemplary job of spending down the prior tranches of federal funds and are tracking a bill in the General Assembly, which would require school divisions to return any remaining funds as of the end of the school year. Obviously, that would be challenging, not just for RPS, but for every division around the state because the funds don't expire until the summer of '24. And so school divisions have been planning accordingly. I don't think the bill will survive, but I did want to just raise that since you brought up the ARP.
Ms. Gibson.
I just want to express the concern I have about not looking at the ARP simultaneously with making this budget decision. As, you know, many, there are millions of dollars allocated in this budget to compensate for funding that is currently, that, for items that are currently funded by the ARP. And so that the board is not able to look at these two documents and plan, budget plan simultaneously, to me, is concerning. And I don't feel like we're able to do this process justice. And, and to be clear, I have expressed concern in the past with the level of detail that we've provided for those ARP funds and other federal dollars. To be frank, I've not been able to reconcile the presentations that we've been given with the documents, with the allocation of those funds in the large 200-page document. And so absent that, absent, you know, I'm, I just, it gives me incredible, it gives me concern that we are basically moving forward with this budget decision without that, without that understanding.
Any other discussions? Ms. White.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My question for Mr. Cameras is, you said in March, you would give us, I guess, a presentation of the ARP. Or can we get something so that we can see how this budget connects with the ARP? Because I'm not seeing any, I'm kind of where Ms. Gibson is. What does the money, how does it tie in to this budget?
Yes, I'm happy to bring something for your review on Monday. I was just trying to not make it more confusing with lots of different funding sources, but happy to bring something on Monday to help show how the two budgets are connected, absolutely.
Ms. Young.
Yeah, I'm not going to beat a dead horse, but really appreciate superintendent's answer to my colleagues' concerns because I share them. And in particular, colleagues, I hope that on Monday we'll have an opportunity to take a deep dive relevant to that collective bargaining term that pertains to when teachers absorb students from other classes. I think the number, if I recall correctly, was 5.1 million. I tend to think the number may be higher, maybe north of that. So just look for that conversation. Appreciate the superintendent's what his answer and his willingness to provide that for her Monday. Recognize that's a quick turnaround. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Cameras, I have a question, you know, related to the ARP. Can you at least assure us, to some degree, that we are not going to be facing a funding cliff of essential services with the loss of the ARP funding and that we are preparing for that?
That is in essence why I have proposed moving a significant number of very, I'll call, bread and butter positions that are currently on the ARP over to the operating budget, bus drivers, nurses, custodians, and so on. There are other positions on the ARP, some of which I think we will want to move over in the subsequent fiscal year, and then a good number of which will not continue. For example, we have a position called Student Intervention Liaison. It was made clear to everybody when they took that role that it is a grant-funded position and that will go away at the end of the '23-'24 school year. And so those positions will roll off. But I'm happy to kind of lay that out as best as I can for you all on Monday.
Thank you. All right.
Okay, so I, I think what I have down for student wellness is accurate. So if it is your pleasure, Madam Chair, may I continue to the next slide?
Yes.
The next bucket is the English learner support. I know we started this discussion, but I know, Madam Chair, you and others wanted to just press hold for a second to give folks an opportunity to read the report from the task force. And I myself have had an opportunity to do so. And so am appreciative of its research and preliminary findings. I don't think anything in this proposal is inconsistent with the findings of the report. In fact, I think it largely supports those findings. The one key recommendation from the task force is to create a separate department for LEAP instruction and services. And I am in full agreement of, for doing that. I am working on a revenue-neutral proposal for the board on that front rather than adding additional positions, knowing the uncertainty of funding and whatnot. So with that, I am open to discussion if there is consensus to move forward with these items or not.
Ms. White.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Cameras, looking at the training part on this English learner support, but I just have a question in general. I'm seeing training for the English learning support, but is there any training? I didn't see any training or professional development for instructional practices for our teachers or substitute teachers or any of those type of training?
Thank you, Mrs. White. So this would be instructional practices training for teachers so that they can better serve students for whom English is their second, third, fourth language. We do have training dollars, generally speaking, for teachers. And a lot of that is in, is in stipends now for teachers to participate in various activities. So this is just the small piece focused on training to help teachers get certified and become more expert in teaching students for whom English is not their first language.
Follow up, Ms. White, then Ms. Jones.
Mr. Cameras, yes. I was aware of the English learner, but I was talking about the other, the rest of the teachers that don't teach English learners.
Yes, I am happy to pull the other training buckets in the budget and add that to our question-and-answer document. I just don't have it off the top of my head, but happy to do that for everything other than English learners.
Thank you. Ms. Jones.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Two quick questions. One, I just wanted to confirm that, Mr. Cameras, that you're saying the funds that potentially will be allocated for the English learner students will hold here and you will bring something back to us in terms of how we will support the new division? Okay, and then my other concern is, and I hope everyone had an opportunity to read the proposal, there are a tremendous amount of social and emotional needs for this community as well. And I don't see that listed in this proposal anywhere. And so I wanted to know, how are we going to incorporate similar, you know, needs in terms of counselors, social workers, and all of those to support the English learners? And I just want to know, had that, you know, been a thought? And if not, I think that is something we definitely need to consider. We've, you know, learned a lot of trauma that has existed. And so I think we do need to address that. So I just wanted to know how we would address that moving forward because it is going to require another level of funding. And so I wanted to just put that out there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. To your first question, yes, I will be bringing back our proposal and I'm trying to do it in a revenue-neutral way for the LEAP department. On your second question, honestly, there is nothing in here specifically targeted towards additional social and emotional support for our English learners. Certainly, on the previous slide, there are additional social workers, for example. I believe one of which at least is at a school that largely, that serves a large number of English learners. So if the board feels strongly about further supporting social and emotional learning for this population, I would humbly submit some addition here and am open to your guidance or the task force guidance as to, as to what that might look like. Or to swap out something currently on the list. And I only put that or on the table to Mr. Young's earlier point. It is, it is probably more unlikely than likely that, that we would get all of this funding. And so if the board wanted to do some prioritization at this point, you could swap out something. But certainly, if you would like to just include some additional supports for that, please just provide that guidance and I will add it in.
Follow up, Madam Chair.
Yes.
Thank you. Yeah, I defer to my colleagues because I really would love to hear. And I know we have this on agenda for Monday, but just their thoughts. I know for the crisis support team, if we're not moving forward with that, you know, maybe just looking at, I mean, I know we would be working with culture and climate and really trying to address those needs. So maybe there's an opportunity there. And then the other question that I had in lieu of the new department or division, and I think maybe in your revenue, I forgot what you just said, but when you bring it back, if it could also address who will be leading this initiative? And is this someone, you know, that we're hiring? But then, or are you looking to do this internal? So I think that would be helpful as well because as we're looking at funding and costs, let's really be able to maximize what we want. And we know that we need a specific individual for that. So that would be helpful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. Absolutely happy to talk through that when we lay all that out. Per your suggestion regarding the funds that are allocated or that were allocated for the crisis support team, one proposal I would put before the board is you could use those funds instead to support additional social workers at the schools with the highest proportion of English language, English learner students. So that could be a way to address that concern, Ms. Jones, by swapping out that crisis team for additional social workers for those schools. Again, just one idea, just putting that on the table for the board's consideration.
Thank you. And again, yeah, if all, if all my boy colleagues could get a chance to look at and read through the proposal, we'd love to share, if you have any questions, and address those very, very important needs and why we feel strongly about how that could be helpful. I think it would be great. Thanks.
Can the record reflect that Dr. Harris Muhammad has arrived? Yes. Okay. Mr. Cameras, I had a question here. Did we receive any? I thought it read that in the General Assembly, there was going to be some money coming to school districts to support English language learners. Do you have any information on that? Is that true?
It's really all contingent on what some of the final decisions are. Mr. Stanley, if you wanted to speak to specific bills or budget amendments?
Sure. Very briefly, Mr. Cameras and Chair Rizzi. The Senate budget proposal does include some additional funding for additional English learner teachers. The House budget did not include any funding. And there were a couple of other pieces of legislation in the House and the Senate, some different other proposals, but unfortunately, both of them have died.
They're all dead.
Everything but the Senate budget still has some additional funding for English learners. So that'll be a point for the conference committees to decide on.
Okay, all right, thank you. You'll keep us updated.
Absolutely.
All right, thank you. And then another question I have with the coaches. I've actually heard from some of our teachers that there's a little bit of a, like, a question about, like, how coaches are being used and what they do. And I'm wondering if there's a way to, like, swap out a coach for, you know, some additional social, emotional support. Yeah, I really actually like to see more information about exactly what coaches do because I think there's some question about that in our district. And I definitely have questions. But just wanted to express that.
Generally speaking, coaches are tasked with providing non-evaluative observation and feedback along with assistance with planning data interpretation and instructional strategies to best meet the needs of their students. Certainly, that would be another way to get at the social and emotional component if the board wanted to swap out the funds that are currently in the proposal for coaches, again, towards bilingual social workers, bilingual counselors. Certainly open to that and just looking for guidance from the board so that we can make the necessary adjustment.
Thank you. So it's possible to just say two coaches and one counselor?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Madam Chair. These are academic coaches that will be working basically with teachers with less than three years of experience?
They would be working with any teacher who has a large number of English learner students who needed assistance. It could be a novice teacher or it could be a teacher who recently took over a class that has a large percentage of those students.
I definitely, what I'm, I'm going back to what Matthew Stanley, Mr. Stanley, just stated regarding that the Senate piece has not been voted on as of yet, correct? So I'd like to know, because we're not the only system in this position, if, is there an advocacy plan to move forward to get the support? We need the support of the, for the teachers to be able to better address what's in place because they have so many students. So they need the academic support as well as the coaching support, as well as the children needing social work support. So what my question is, if right now, as we are, it would be my last choice to do it with the academic coach based upon the data that shows that our students that are still learning the language are financially, excuse me, academically struggling. So I look forward to that support for the teachers to be able to get strategies. I think we need more than two or three or four or five coaches, to be sincere. And no matter what the grade level is or what the, the position is. But my question is, if we could table that right now and see or, and also advocate for that position to be filled by the Senate? That's just my, it's not just my suggestion. That's my suggestion moving forward. Because if we get the money, then we'll have the money to be able to assist from the Senate. I don't know what the history there is overall. So that's my suggestion is at this point, before we do it with coaches. I'd like to hear from teachers as well with that. But I also know we need additional mental health support. We need as much as we can possibly get for every student, particularly those students who are also making that transition to a new country and a lot's going on. So I just ask that we table that thought for right now, maybe by the time we finalize in March. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. You know, I just would like to add that I still want information on what coaches do and I would like some data on, like, whether what they do has made a difference. I mean, if we have evidence that coaches have actually made a change in academic performance, then sure. But absent that data, I am worried that that money could be best used somewhere else.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm not sure I'd be able to pull together effectiveness data by Monday. And so I would recommend, given that, that maybe we swap this out for bilingual counselors or bilingual social workers in schools with the highest percentage of English learners. I think that would more squarely meet the desires of the board. I'm happy to make that adjustment. I also wanted to just note per your advocacy question and Mrs. Burke's point, as I shared in RPS Direct yesterday, right now, the General Assembly Budget Conference is meeting. So that is a group of senators and delegates hashing out the details, trying to come up with a compromise between the Senate version and the House version. As Mr. Stanley noted, the Senate version is much better for RPS. And so for anyone who is watching, as I shared in RPS Direct, calling or emailing the conferees to advocate for the Senate version is probably the best thing people can do right now. And so I want to publicly just share the names of the conferees, if you don't mind, Madam Chair. On the Senate side, Barker, Deeds, Hanger, Howell, Locke, Lucas, Newman, Normant, and Sazla. And on the House side, Austin, Bloxum, Brewer, Knight, Sickles, and Torian. I want to be clear, just because I mentioned someone's name, that doesn't mean they're opposed to the Senate version. In fact, many of those people are very supportive of the Senate version. I'm just listing everyone who's on the Budget Conference Committee. And they are the ones who are in the room making the decisions. And the more advocacy, the sooner, the better. And that list, along with emails and phone numbers, is in my RPS Direct yesterday. I will repeat it again tomorrow to make sure everybody has that easily accessible.
Thank you. I still had a later date. I still at a later date would like to see some data on the efficacy of academic coaches in general. It's just a concern that I have and would like to see more information.
Absolutely.
Yes. Ms. Jones, did I see your hand? And then I see Dr. Harris Mohammed.
Yes, I just wanted to add really quickly in the conversation relative to counselors and social workers. I do think we need to have maybe a further discussion as to what their roles are because I don't want it to, oh, Ms. Page over here looking at me, but I don't want to seem like we're prioritizing one over the other because they both have unique and specific needs and are very necessary. But I do think that it would behoove us to maybe even think about all of those folks being under one roof or chief, or however you want to call it. But I do think we need to further our discussion around counselors and social workers so that we're not prioritizing one or the other because they're both necessary in order to attribute to student success. Thanks.
Thank you. Dr. Harris Mohammed?
Thank you. Mr. Cameras, in regards to the academic coaches, how do we track the performance, not of the individual? But I'm not asking that question, but how do we track the data outcomes or the student outcomes for each school that they're responsible for? If that cannot be quickly obtained, I'm concerned. Because I would think an academic coach, part of their responsibility and movement of working with teachers and students is that they would track the success, the growth. They would create a mapping of some kind of tiered levels of outcomes for students, if it's the red level, green level, yellow level, so for each school that they're working with. So if we don't have that readily available, if we can't speak to, if we can't articulately speak to this is where each school is with an academic coach, I am terribly concerned that we are not using them for the business of which a academic coach has been designed to be utilized for student outcomes. It disturbs me that I've heard that, that we don't have, that we can't readily pull that data. We should be able to speak to it, this school here, this school there. And because we can't do that, I'm concerned we're not in tune with our data of student outcomes in each school. So I too would, I'm not supporting it because there is no evidence that those positions are working according to our data prior to the pandemic. It's not working. And so we need to do something different. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to clarify, we most certainly have data. We have it down to the teacher level for every single school. I was merely reflecting on to be able to determine the effectiveness of a coach is a complicated question. That is not simply a summary of student achievement data for a particular school or a particular class. There are multiple factors that we would have to look at. But I want to be absolutely clear. We certainly have data by school, by teacher, and so on. I was merely speaking to doing a rigorous analysis of a particular individual's impact and then extrapolating from that over an entire group of individuals. That being said, two thoughts. One, absolutely happy to have a deeper discussion of that at an upcoming meeting. Two, again, I think there is a consensus to shift away from the coaches here. And my recommendation would be towards additional social workers to assist with the broad suite of challenges that many of our recent immigrant families have. And so, Madam Chair, with your and the board's permission, what I would do is, my conclusion from this conversation is that there is consensus on everything except for the coaches, and I would transition those over to bilingual social workers for our schools with the greatest need in terms of English learner population.
Madam Chair, follow up?
Yes.
So while your team is taking that deep dive, I would ask the board to support looking at areas where we have individuals that are directly tied to a specialist position, coaching position. And I'm going to state this with love, but it is real. We need to stop placing individuals in positions that they are not experienced nor qualified for. I mean, that's just, it is what it is. And if they do not have a direct, if they do not have direct evidence that they have moved, shifted student outcomes, produced better results, then we need to be courageous enough to have that conversation. And this is on, when we're dealing with student outcomes, and we are where we are with our data, a lot of the things that I've seen in this budget, I'm concerned about if we have the right people in place. And I don't want to use the word right people. So let me back up. I want, I want, I'm curious if we have hit the target of having individuals work at their best capacity. And so we have to be courageous about answering those questions. So, and I'll wait because I have another point that I want to make, but not one that. So thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Ms. Jones, did I see your hand go up? No. Are we done with this portion of the budget, colleagues? And is the consensus that we will move the coaches, or at least transfer that money to support social, emotional, you know, additional counselors? Yes, Ms. Jones, I'm sorry.
So we're saying the ESL coaches to move that to, you're saying social and emotional?
Yeah, well, you know, my suggestion was, one, it sounds like Mr. Cameras is suggesting all of them.
I'm not sure if that's a decision that we should be making. I think that has to do on the school level to, I guess, Dr. Harris Mohammed's point, is that we should know whether or not these coaches are working before we just decide to move them. So I know you had asked for that data and information, Madam Chair. I think I don't want to, again, move in lieu of the fact that we still have not addressed all the needs and the concerns in the proposal for the English learners. So I do not want to say yes to that until we have all had a chance to make a, you know, clear and informed decision on that move. And for the record, I'm not saying that it's not necessary. I just don't think we should be making a decision tonight. I don't want to get in front of making decisions about this, and then when we bring the proposal, it's like, oh, well, you took that out. So I just want to be clear about that.
Yeah. Ms. Jones, I don't think, was there anything in the proposal about coaches?
Well, because we are still communicating with the data team, right? And we're still getting data on the coaches. I think it's only fair that we have that discussion on Monday. So while it may not have been indirectly in the proposal, we don't have all the data yet. So that's how I'm thinking about it.
Thank you. I feel that, you know, the social, emotional will take precedence, but you know, I will go with the board on this one. Mr. Cameras, did you have something?
In the interest of trying to put together a proposal for you on Monday, I'll, I'm going to split the difference and go with what I think, Ms. Rizzi, was your original proposal, which is one coach. And to social workers or counselors, I would love to talk with the team and see which they feel would be most impactful for this particular population. And again, it's certainly the purview of the board to change that. But in the interest of just moving forward, that's what I'll go with for now.
All right. Thank you. I believe we can move on now. Thank you.
Thank you. The next bucket are the positions, this chunk of positions that are currently on the ARP, the American Rescue Plan, 16 bus drivers, eight counselors, 18 custodians, 11 nurses, two psychologists, three social workers, and then the 30 RV8 staff. So again, would love to just hear from the board if there is consensus for each of these job categories to proceed as recommended or to change.
Ms. Gibson?
Again, I really think it's important that we see that federal budget so that we can make a determination that if there are other positions that we would want to add to this. And so, you know, I'm just concerned that if we don't get the document until Monday, and we're expected to vote on the budget on Monday, I'm not sure, I'm just not sure we're going to have enough information in order to be making a decision like that, particularly with this section, which is about positions that are currently funded by those federal dollars.
Again, I will make sure to get information to you as quickly as possible on other positions. All that I'm merely asking is, the board may wish to add more positions here to be moved over. I'm simply asking, are these ones the board would want to, at least in our first batch, preserve by moving them over to the operating budget? It doesn't preclude the board from adding additional ones. Just trying to understand if this is generally the direction folks would support. And again, just trying to get a sense of, at least for this bucket. We can certainly add more at a later point, but I'll leave it there.
Ms. White?
Mr. Cameras, thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Cameras, based on the number of FTEs for each position, do you have a, I guess, data that shows how many more have to be added on? Because you have 16 bus drivers. Are there additional, are there more bus drivers that need to come on?
Thank you, Mrs. White. This would, this list would close out all of those job categories in terms of positions funded on stimulus dollars. So for example, if we moved all 16 bus drivers, there would be no more bus drivers on the ARP. If we did the eight counselors, there would be no more counselors on the ARP. So we intentionally tried to move whole categories over as we think about scaling back those dollars.
I have a follow up. Looking at those positions, I'm going to the Richmond Virtual Academy. You have 30 for the FTEs. So once they go over, will they be automatically funded every year? Or is this all the 30?
Yes. So once they're moved over to the operating budget, they would be like any other teacher, funded with recurring dollars until such time as the board made an alternate decision. But they would be like any other staff in any other school. Yes, they would be funded in perpetuity until such time as the board made a change.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Okay, thank you. Okay, Ms. Page?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Question for the superintendent. Do we ever get the number of students that are being served in the Richmond Virtual Academy?
Yes, it's in the question and answer document that we provided, and I uploaded it again with additional information based on the questions you asked. If you give me a minute, I can track it down and find the page number.
Thank you.
Okay, it is, it starts on the bottom of page 15. It's question 40. And at the elementary level, right now, kindergarten enrollment is three, first grade is nine, second grade is eight. I'm sorry, there are two classes of second grade, 1/8 and 1/12, two classes of third grade, 1/17 and 1/21, two classes of fourth grade, 1/13 and the other 13, and one class of fifth grade with 14. At the secondary level, there's one class of sixth grade with 24, one class of seventh grade with 15, one class of eighth grade with 21. And then the high school students don't have traditional classes because they use the virtual program from the state. But just so you have it, in terms of ninth graders, we have six, 10th graders, 16, 11th graders, five, 12th graders, five.
Yes, go ahead, Ms. Page.
Another question, and I'm very sensitive to the needs of our students. But my question is, is this the best use of money to support our students? Because we're talking about approximately, what, 50 students?
No, ma'am. At the elementary level, it's 110 students. And at the secondary level, it's 92 students.
200?
Yes, ma'am.
So again, my question is, the monies being spent, are we utilizing the funding with our students? Okay, I guess my question, can it be better served in a traditional school setting? That's my question. And you don't have to answer it now if you don't have the data to support your response, but yes.
I don't have the RBA student achievement data in front of me. I can certainly pull that for the board. I defer to the board as to the prioritization of funds. Given the board's decision to make the program a school of record, I wanted to make sure that I fulfilled our obligation to then fund it. As for the size of the school, it is unique in that there are no walls to determine its capacity. That is a policy. That is a policy question that is for the board to decide.
Thank you. Any other? Yes, Ms. Jones?
Thank you. I guess my question is, do we have any information that supports maybe like the projected enrollment? And how many students we envision actually taking part in this school? Is this, you know, like, are parents looking to phase their students out? Are they looking to keep their students in all the way through fifth grade? I think that's important data that can help us support the amount of money that is being requested to maintain the school. And so if we could get just some feedback, no different than when we look at comprehensive schools, the projected enrollment is how we fund the schools. And so maybe just thinking about what that looks like in what grade. So if it's 200, you know, what's the projected maybe enrollment for the next two, three years? Because we still are going to have to fund it come next year. And we don't want to get to this issue every time, you know, funding comes up to support the school. So I think maybe thinking about it from a different way of like, well, you know, not so much are they achieving? We've already, you know, we know that they are, but like, how long do folks plan on being in these schools? Especially since you mentioned the high school is totally separate. So essentially, we're funding a elementary, sounds like somewhat middle at this point. Thanks.
Thank you.
Yes, so I'm happy to pull, for example, the number of applications in the open enrollment process. But again, it's really a, a policy decision. You could, you could fund all of those seats in RBA. You could fund some of them. The, the difference with RBA is that, again, there are no walls. So whereas I'll, like Franklin Military, you know, at some point, there's a building capacity and, you know, they're not going to be able to take more kids. That's just not the case with RBA. So ultimately, I think what the board is going to have to grapple with is, is the decision, any child who wants to go to RBA, we're going to fund it? Or is the decision, we're going to define it as a certain size? There might be other options. So I just think that's, that's what makes it a little bit different. I would say also on the, on the high school, and I do want to note, we're, you know, we're paying tuition for students to participate in that virtual program. So there is a, there's a cost there and that's built into this, this funding. So again, happy to pull that data and I'll, I'll pull the achievement data and, and the board can look at them both and, and make some decisions.
Follow up, Madam Chair?
Yes.
So essentially, this school is treated, is it, is it by application? Or is it just if you decide that you want your student to be in virtual?
So thus far, and as it's currently set up, it's, there's no application other than entering into the open enrollment process like you would do for any other school. Again, the difference is, you know, a student who wants to go to John B. Kerry, for example, there may only be five seats available for kids who want to go to John B. Kerry. And we can't add 20 because there's just nowhere to put them. That's not the case with RBA because it's virtual. So you could add an infinite number of children. And so that's why it's, it's just different. And I would just need guidance from the board as to, you know, is there any, is there no limit? Is there some limit? What would it look like? But again, let me pull the numbers on how many folks applied and then, and the achievement data, and then we can look at it and, and the board can make some decisions.
Ms. Page?
Yes, Madam Chair, there's a follow up question. So in pulling that data, I guess you're using, you'll be using the data from its inception as your baseline?
I mean, it's only been in existence this year and last. So yeah, whatever, the same, same data we would look at for any other.
Right, so it will show either a decline or increase. And also just, just to note this for, a lot of school divisions have moved away from the virtual for the high school students, what, secondary students because of the cost. And I just wanted to make, be on the record for that. Thank you.
Thank you. To, to this topic, Mr. Camus, that, you know, Ms. Ms. Page brings up something that I am going to ask for. You know, I do know that other districts have created permanent virtual options for their students as a result of, you know, establishing virtual school during COVID. I would like to know about those programs. You know, because I know that some of our, you know, local school districts have actually created permanent virtual options. And then when you talk about no limit, are there class limits at RBA? Does one teacher teach unlimited amount of students? How does grading work with that? I'm, I'm just a little confused about what you're, you're saying there.
Thank you, Ms. Rizzi. I'm, I'm certainly happy to gather information from some of the surrounding divisions. To your second question, no, a teacher does not have an unlimited number of students. We still maintain the required ratios by the state. So for example, one to 24. It's, when I'm saying it could be unlimited, I mean, you could just keep adding teachers for as many kids as, as wanted to be there. So again, I'm, I'm making up numbers, so please don't anyone run with this. But let's just say 500 more students wanted to come. Then the board could allocate enough teachers for 500 more students at the Virtual Academy. Or the board could say, look, the Virtual Academy is going to have this number of teachers. It could be the current number, it could be more, it could be fewer, whatever the board wants. And then we'll fill it up, up until that number of teachers, but go no further than that. So again, that's a, a policy question that ultimately the board would need to decide. But to be crystal clear, no, teachers do not have an unlimited number of kids. And in fact, right now, again, actually, most of the class sizes are quite small. So again, kindergarten, three students, first grade, nine students. You know, two second grade classes, one with eight, one with 12. And so it's, some of the other ones get up a little bit, but the classes right now are actually quite small.
Thank you. Ms. White?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Camus, do the Virtual Academy, do they have all the resources that they need? Do they have the counselors?
I think if you were to ask the Virtual Academy staff, they would say that they don't. And that there are additional positions that they feel would be appropriate for a school. I don't necessarily disagree with that. I went with the current number of FTEs as that is what I thought was the most fiscally responsible thing to do at this point. We could certainly take some of those FTEs and convert them into some of the other positions that they would want, particularly if enrollment, for example, at kindergarten is three and first grade is nine, you could have a K1 class of 12 and take one of those positions and turn it into a counselor. So again, it, it really depends on how many students ultimately the, the board envisions for RBA. And based on that, then I think we can figure out how do we best utilize the funds that we have to staff the school with all the supports that it needs.
Thank you.
Dr. Harris Mohammed?
Yes, ma'am, thank you. I would like for the board to, it is my understanding, if we would go back to the minutes, yes, it was maybe some great discussion, in-depth discussion about the purpose and the creation of the RBA Academy. Mr. Camus, it is my understanding that the foundation of that school is serving students with severe and cognitive disabilities. Am I correct?
No, ma'am. The initial thinking was that it would serve homebound students who are there for illness or injury, not severe cognitive impairment.
Okay, right. So that was part of the discussion. So there's, the students that they're serving are just homebound students and administratively based, home-based students?
So right now, they are serving essentially two populations. One is anyone who was in the program last, a year ago, who wanted to stay regardless of whether they are homebound or not. And then the second population is some students who are homebound, again, for, for medical reasons, not for disciplinary reasons per the board's decision last year.
Not for discipline reasons?
Correct.
For the board.
So not administrative placement.
Not administrative homebase. So, and I think, I brought this up last year and I would like for us to consider this again, not, maybe not a long discussion tonight, but we have students that are waiting for their cases, for, I don't, I don't like the word case, but for their, they're waiting for their panel hearing to be heard. And right now, while they're waiting for their appeal, because it comes to us of the parent's appeal, the decision, if they're waiting for the appeal, it's not a two-day wait, it's not a three-day wait. Our students here in our division are waiting two weeks, three weeks, four weeks. The process, the procedure and the protocols need to be reviewed. So I asked in 2022, and I'm going to ask again, why can't those students be administratively home-based until their hearings are heard? Which means they are still receiving their instruction. They, and they're not in the school. They're not receiving, and this is, let me back up. This is if a student has a disability or not. Okay, so I would like for us to consider that again, so we can continue. Because one of the things that we, all board members who have, and every single one of us on this board at some point in time, have served on the panel hearing. And we hear consistently that my child has not received any work. My child hasn't received any work. How long you been out? Then they name how many weeks and what have you. My child hasn't received any work. So to combat that, why can't they be allowed to obtain their instruction through the Virtual Academy while they're waiting to hear that case? I don't need an answer tonight, I just want people to meditate on that. Because if we're truly about the students regardless of zip code, then again, we have to be courageous and do some things a little different. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Dr. Harris Mohammed. I actually agree with you. That is what I proposed last budget season. Ultimately, the board decided to restrict RBA to homebound for medical or, for medical reasons. So again, I'm merely trying to implement what the board decided and will go in whichever direction the board ultimately decides this year.
Thank you. I have a comment and then we'll go to Ms. Page. You know, I vividly remember this conversation. It was a long one, we've already had it. The faculty at RBA was strongly opposed to this suggestion because they didn't want to necessarily be a school that dealt with students who had disciplinary issues. I agree that our students who are paneled need other alternatives and we need a better way of tracking whether or not these students are receiving their work because there is evidently a problem with that, that, you know, there's some breakdown at the school level for many of these students. But I remember that very clearly, that the faculty at Richmond Virtual Academy wanted this to be a school of record, a specialty school like all others. And am I correct in that people who apply this year don't necessarily have to be homebound? It could just be a parent who wants their child to attend RBA?
Correct.
So I think that that was the vision of where they were headed, is that it's a specialty school, but it would be a virtual specialty school. I, I do not disagree with the fact that our students who have disciplinary issues and who are paneled, they need more support. But this was not the way that that was going to be addressed. I just wanted to refresh our memories of that before we have further discussion. Ms. Page?
Question for the superintendent. So this is going back to our students that are waiting for, you know, the panel hearings. So during that gap, you know, from being out of school, students are able, are supposed to be receiving their work, classwork through Google Classroom? So then that should never be an issue with our students waiting for, to have a panel hearing?
Well, just to clarify, having work available in Google Classroom is different from having instruction in Google Classroom. So, you know, I think that the challenge is currently, though I think we need to figure this out, they're not getting, you know, live instruction. And so if a teacher, you know, is able to post a video of their instruction or a video that speaks to the instruction in Google Classroom, they're able to do that absent that the student's getting the work, but they are not getting the sort of actual instruction. And so I think that's what we have to, have to figure out. And we have to figure out how to get young people who are awaiting panels to, to do the work and to log on and, and to engage. And I want to be honest, that is very, very difficult with this particular subset of students for the very reason that they are out of school. And so I absolutely agree that is a, that is an unsolved issue that we face and one that we are trying to tackle. But the, the solution is, at the moment, not quite at hand.
So that's a deeper discussion for a later date.
Mrs. White?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to put a plug in this, Mr. Camus. You was saying that we didn't really have like a place, and I know Google Classroom is not the same, it doesn't give you that personal touch. But we do have two alternative. Don't we have a place over at the tech that students could come in with their computer or have their computer stationary? We also have the ISAP program, the SVRAIS, that have seats available until they get a panel, somewhere where there is personal interaction, interaction.
Yes, we do have those programs. Neither of them is currently designed to support students who are on long-term suspension for severe behaviors. But that is one way to approach this, Ms. White. I, I agree with you. And it's actually one of the ideas on the table. Can we modify these programs to be serving those young people? But ISAP, for example, right now is just set up for GED completers. And then the other And then the other program is really for overage, undercredited students who just need some help, you know, finishing up a few things to get across the finish line. Again, neither is quite set up to take all the kids who are currently facing a panel. But that is certainly one of the options on discussion. How could we modify one of those programs or create, you know, another version of one of those for those young people?
Dr. Harris Mohammed?
No, I don't have a question.
Ms. Jones, okay, thank you. I'm sorry, Ms. Jones. Thank you.
I just was wondering if it's possible that we could put this discussion on the agenda for a later date? Because while we have several options on the table, the issue at hand is really case management. And there's a breakdown in that between the time they get suspended, to the time they are paneled, to the time that they are to return to school. So to consider, you know, moving them to a temporary virtual school or all of these things is just nothing but, you know, continuing to add on, you know, to the additional, you know, frustration of trying to get a student back in school or the resources or whatever decisions are made that parents can continue to keep the process moving. So I do think that we should add this as a part of, to Ms. Page's point, a deeper discussion and just really address this topic that has been at the forefront of handling the disciplinary and the actions and the committee responses for a while now. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. Dr. Harris Mohammed?
I do have a question, ma'am. Thank you. Mr. Cameras, can you show me on the budget consensus tracker that was submitted to us where there is a line item for reorganization of the Community Engagement Office and also the discussion of rezoning MLK?
Neither of those items are on. This is simply tracking everything that was in the budget proposal, plus anything that the board indicated a consensus that they wanted to add. If, so yes, I'm just reflecting whatever the board consensus is.
Okay, thank you. School Board colleagues, I would like for us to, and I had, I shared this in, sometime in late 2022, where I would like a further discussion on rezoning Martin Luther King Junior Middle School, as well as how it will look, what it will take to reorganize the Community Engagement Office. We don't have to do that tonight, of course, but I would like further discussion on that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So what I have taken away is, tentatively speaking anyway, there was consensus on everything in terms of moving over to the ARP with the just open question about the size of RVA. And I'll bring back the data for the board to consider and ultimately make that decision. That brings us to the other board priorities and division obligations. The deputy clerk, school renaming, teacher retention fund, the additional seats at the governor's school and regional school, and then some transfers and utility increase and such. So happy to go through these one at a time. And with that.
Okay, Ms. White?
Thank you, Madam Chair. What I want to actually express is concerning the governor's schools. I know that we did add seats last year, and I'm fine with that for this budget. But what I would like to see, Mr. Cameras, is data that, let me know how many students accepted their seats at the governor's schools and how many completed the entire program, like graduation, within the last four years?
I don't have that off the top of my head, but I'm happy to pull that for you.
Thank you.
All right, looks like Ms. Jones, Ms. Page, and Dr. Harris Mohammed. Ms. Jones?
Thank you. I just wanted to say that I, to support the initiatives in this section, we did vote on the seats last year, so we need to be a board of our word and stick with what we said. I know that there is conversation around looking at these seats for the future. I do hope that we do address that and just continue to focus on the equitable inclusivity of all students of RPS. So, and if we can get this deputy clerk soon, that'd be great, too. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Page.
Yes, so colleagues, I sent an email today regarding the governor's schools and Code RBA. So just as we've already stated, be true to our commitment for the seats from the budget year last year. But going forward, with this current budget that will impact the upcoming school year, '23, '24, I am proposing and sharing with my colleagues to reduce the suggested seats for Appomattox by 10, Mega Walker by 10 seats, Code RBA by 3 seats, for a total of $301,000 and $500,000, 301,500,000 dollars. Also, I'm suggesting that we reinstate the gifted coordinator slash coordinator academic office position and that total position, $131,000. And if we take that away from the 301, it leaves us a balance of $170,500,000. And with this proposal to create an equity proposal, and the selection process should include 80% of RPS middle school students to be equally represented in our listed schools, all of our middle schools. And to include in this equity policy, we should also include all of our specialty schools. In particular, you know, our specialty school that has a mission for, for that particular school, such as Richmond Community High School. So I want us to take that into serious consideration and support that motion. And I can provide the clerk with the motion if the board considers this motion.
Ms. Burt?
I received the email which Mrs. Page is referencing, and I thought it was a good suggestion. However, are we being transparent and fair? Because usually during work sessions, we don't make motions. I know we can make motions at any time, but it's not on the agenda, and we haven't given parents an opportunity to have any input, any public. I suggest that maybe that's put on a, to make their motion on Monday? Or let's give people a chance. The agenda's already been done.
So point taken.
Yes.
So minus the motion, board members to consider this. And yes, in full transparency, there's nothing to hide. This is about equity. And our students should truly represent, be represented in the schools, the seats that we provide across the board.
Yes.
Okay. I fully agree. I'm just talking, I'm referencing tonight what our procedures are at this point, that's all. But I, yeah, but I understand what you're saying, but to make a motion during this session, I really want us to stay. Good. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Burt.
Exactly. Equity and, thank you.
All right. But, Mr. Cameras, you know, you did, you mentioned a compromise of sorts. Do you want to discuss that tonight or at a later date?
I'm happy to, Madam Chair, if you'd like.
Yes.
What I had offered was that we proceed with the additional seats per the board's decision last year in honor of those commitments. But for next year's application process, we at a minimum reserve those additional seats for students from low-income households. And I think that would go a long way towards addressing some of the equity concerns that we have talked about at this table. What I would further offer, Madam Chair, is maybe once we get through this cycle, perhaps in March or April, we could have the findings from the commission report. We could come back to those and make some decisions about all of the seats to ensure that they are reflecting the full diversity of Richmond Public Schools for the cycle that would come the following year. So that would be my, my recommendation to the board, is that we schedule that for a March or April meeting. We dig into it, make some decisions, get public input. And then that would impact not just the new seats, but all seats to ensure that we really are pursuing equity for all of this.
Thank you. Ms. White, and then Ms. Gibson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And, Mr. Cameras, I hear your suggestion about the low equity concerns. But I have been asking for a presentation for the last three meetings on the selection process. I would like the board to have that selection process so that we can vet it. It can also go to the community. I know one of the processes myself, because I do sit on the board at Walker. And it's not about low equity concerns, it's about the way the buckets are done, how the students are chosen. And Richmond Public School students shouldn't be guaranteed one seat. We are a majority school of African-American students, and we shouldn't be guaranteed one seat for one middle school. I would like that presentation to be presented to the school board. Also, my colleague, Madam Chair, I heard that she, next Monday, she would like to make a motion. I also would like to make a motion to rescind both positions, that position that I'm looking at, that she, one of them that she had said, which was the coordinator academic office, known as the gifted and talented coordinator. Also, the academic office specialist, known as the school-based interventions team coordinator. I'm not sure how both of those individuals were put on the RIF because they are critical to nature and the qualifications for both of them are needed. And I also ask for, to tell the board, the board more on this RIF. I was told that we was going to have a closed meeting where you're going to tell us why these individuals were on the RIF list. Also, I would like to know, show me where they fall on the organizational table. And if they are riffed, who would do the work? Because right now, we are down in every department, almost. We are barely hanging on with personnel. So I would like to know who's actually going to do this work.
Mr. Cameras?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Mrs. White. I do want to note earlier today, I did email the board the selection processes for all the specialty schools and the governor's schools. I've also included all of that information in the question and answer document. It begins on page 18. It's question 48. And it goes through page 19, page 20, 21. Yeah, it concludes on page 21. So pages 18 through 21, it lists all of that. And I'm eager to have the conversation about what changes we would like to make, because there are many that I think we should make in the interests of equity. And then in terms of the positions, that's our next bucket. So happy to talk through those as soon as we're ready to proceed from the current bucket.
Okay. Ms. White, follow-up?
Yes, follow-up. Yes, but you did not actually speak on the rescinding of both of those positions that I just mentioned. And I think my colleague also did mention one of the positions that I want to rescind also.
I'm happy to do as the board decides. I was just reserving that conversation for the next bucket, since it's on the next slide, but I defer to the chair.
Well, I believe Ms. Gibson still has a question or comment. Gibson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a personal commitment, so I have to leave in about 10 minutes. So I want to just make a couple of comments regarding the, so pertaining to the specialty schools, I just want to express I'm thankful that we're having the conversation about, about more inclusion and equity in that program, so I look forward to that. On the item regarding the central office cuts, I share the sentiment of my colleague, Ms. White, that, you know, that we need more information about the specifics and the positions. I heard, we've heard from, from folks that have been told that their jobs have been riffed, and they're sharing details about the work that they do that I feel like I don't, I didn't have yet as a board member. And so I just think it's important that we look at that. And I want to make sure, you know, we should not have to go into clothes to have conversations about these positions, because this really should not be about addressing personnel matters, right? This should not be about the people and the roles. If there are recommendations about changes, this really should be about the efficiency of the department and the reorganization plan. And so I do feel that there is information that we're lacking in terms of that, those proposed changes. And before I leave this evening, I did want to express thoughts regarding the CIP budget. I just, I, I want to emphasize my concern that we've had a school burn down. We've had a bus depot burn down. The insurance funding that we have is apparently lacking, which means that if any building were to burn, we are at risk. And so I, I, I don't understand why we have items on this to resurface tennis courts and add, you know, press boxes when we have buildings with no sprinklers in them. So, you know, and in my district, you know, the Thomas Henderson, like, I've not heard from families that are looking for tennis, but I have heard from teachers who are concerned about, you know, the lack of walls in the school. And I know that that's a very expensive ask. But, but it's understandable that folks are asking the question because they, they, they don't understand why these allocations, the recommendations for these capital expenses are there. And I also wanted to ask a question regarding one of the other buildings in my district, which is John Marshall. In our last budget, we talked about the wall, which is buckling. And the wall is still buckling, and so I was hoping to get some type of update on that to ensure, because again, like, before we put in a stadium press box, we need to make sure that the building is structurally sound.
Thank you. Mr. Cameras, would you like to?
Again, I'm happy to make any changes to this proposal that the board would like to make. So I'm looking forward to the CIP discussion. And if the board would like to not move forward with any of these proposed projects and do something else, all I need is just clarity from the board.
Ms. Jones.
Thank you. I'd just like to add to the CIP conversation. J.L. Francis has another building that is wide open that we have been bringing to the table and to the forefront for a minute now. And there is, you know, not enough space. There's not any walls. The students are in the amphitheater, wide open. So I definitely would like to add that to the conversation around the CIP budget and how we can discuss making some additional changes there as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Colleagues, can we move to the next section, which is central office cuts, and focus there for a moment?
May I, Madam Chair, just briefly, as a repeat back, I think what I heard was consensus on everything on the board priorities and other obligations bucket. So I'm going to mark those as green for now.
No, I had my hand up.
Oh, sorry, Dr. Harris Muhammad. I did not know.
We do not have data to support the teacher retention fund. I know there was a task force, but what did the task force do and say? And where are the surveys? Where's the information to set aside $100,000 for funds to support the implementation of the forthcoming recommendations? We haven't even seen the data, we haven't seen any information. This is the probably second time that we have received information about the teacher retention, teacher retention task force, and it's coming to us in a form of a budget line item. I do not agree. We've been talking about data and evidence and providing such to make informed decisions. So I would like to have that set aside for right now until we can get that. That's my recommendation because it makes no sense that we have discussed here at great length about other items that we need evidence for and data for. This is one of those items. And to ask for $100,000 for a task force to implement recommendations, what are the recommendations? And then why can't the building administrators implement the recommendations? I mean, I'm just trying to understand what is $100,000 for. So my recommendation is to remove that right now until we get, put this on the list of gathering the data, all of it, so we can make an informed decision on Monday. So I would like for that to be removed for ongoing discussion. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Cameras and then Ms. Jones, you have your hand up.
Yes, so the $100,000 is a placeholder because the group working on recommendations is ongoing. And so I wanted to make sure that there were some funds set aside. And the board passed a motion articulating a desire to have some funds set aside for this work in the budget. And so once we have those recommendations, perhaps it is less, perhaps most of it, all of it could be implemented without any funds. I just wanted to make sure I was setting aside some funds so that when they had completed their work, there would be some funds to assist with it. If it's not needed, we can certainly remove it. But again, I will do as a consensus of the board decides.
Thank you. Ms. Jones?
I just wanted to add, I know my colleague, Ms. Duer, is home with her new baby, but I remember she had mentioned gathering some information about the utility costs. She had asked for something, and I just wanted to raise it since she wasn't here in case it was something that was relative to this cost.
She had asked about, could we enter any performance management contracts that might save us some funds? So for anyone watching at home, basically, a performance management contract is when basically an agreement is set up such that an entity will do a whole bunch of work at a school, like replace windows with more energy-efficient ones and such, with the idea that doing that would ultimately reduce your energy costs. And so the entity will pay for everything upfront, and then we pay back the entity over many, many years. Again, the idea being that the savings from reduced energy costs would outweigh the payments that we would make over many years. We have one such, I'm sorry, two such agreements currently on the books that we're at the tail end of paying, and those are included in the question and answers. I'll try to find the page number. I am not personally convinced that RPS got a good deal on those. I don't know. They were signed many, many years ago, well before any of us were in leadership positions. All that to say, what I shared with Ms. Duer is I think the best next step is for her to bring that to the finance committee and have a discussion as to whether that's something the board would like to pursue. It wouldn't have any impact for this coming fiscal year. That would be a down-the-road sort of thing.
Thank you. More colleagues, this meeting has been noticed to end at eight. You know, I certainly believe, you know, we need to stay here as long as we need to have this discussion, but I just wanted to draw your attention to that. And are we ready to move to the next section? Mr. Cameras.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I have heard a lack of consensus on the coordinator and the academic office, the gifted and talented role. So I'm, I'm marking that red. I just heard one question from Ms. White about the office associate. Again, I defer to the board, just trying to be as fiscally responsible as we possibly can. I haven't heard anything on any other position. So barring that, I'm assuming that those are good to go, but welcome any additional guidance, particularly on the office associate since Mrs. White raised that.
Colleagues. Mr. Cameras, I do have, I think this is going along with what Ms. Gibson talked about. If you have, if you recommended the riffing of these positions, it certainly would be good to see some kind of rationale for why you believe they are no longer necessary or where those, the duties of those positions will be redistributed.
So I, I'm not sure I would characterize this as positions that are completely unnecessary. I think, in fact, RPS could use a lot more help. But what I was trying to do is to continue to prioritize our schools above all else. And so I asked each division of the organization to identify if they had to tighten their belts further, what would be some cuts that you would put forward, both in positions and in non-personnel matters, which are also included here. And so these, this is a list that has come up. I'm happy to articulate where the work streams for each of these positions would go. To be frank, it, it means other people taking on more work. That's just the reality of the current situation we're in. And again, as a reminder, having reduced over 100 positions from the central office, the portfolio of lots of folks just has gotten much, much larger. But again, I believe it's the right step to take so that we can continue to do everything possible to hold our schools harmless. But again, to your point, I'm happy to articulate where each of the work streams will go for these proposed reductions.
Thank you. Ms. White.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, I would like for you to elaborate more on the academic office specialist, which is the School-Based Interventions Team Coordinator. Because I'm really need to understand why we're cutting intervention support when we are, everybody practically on this board is asking for some type of intervention support. And I'm not understanding if the person is qualified and their job, they're doing their job like they're supposed to, they're being rifted because, I guess you said, some people gave you some names. And I'm only seeing about 10 names here. But what I don't see is any of the top-heavy positions in here. And I'm not understanding that because we do have a couple of directors, directorates that have quite a few directors and more people than enough that can be put out to maybe another directory or cross-train with another directory. But I haven't heard that. I'm just hearing that qualified, some of these actual reductions are dealing with qualified individuals. And the gifted and talent coordinator, that is really one that you have to be qualified to be gifted and talented. So why would we get rid of someone who's experienced and qualified? I'm just not understanding that. Maybe you can elaborate on that some more at a later time. Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Cameras.
Again, I want to be clear, this isn't about any of the particular individuals in these positions. This is about us. I'm trying my very best to meet the needs of our schools within the reality of the fiscal situation that I believe we're facing. Do I want to make any of these cuts? No. But as it is, unfortunately, I think most of what we've talked about tonight, we likely won't be able to do, given funding realities. I pray that we do. I pray that we get everything we ask for and more from the city and that the Senate version of the General Assembly bill gets passed and that all of those things come to fruition. I was trying to proactively tighten further at the central office so that we could do some of the other things that we've talked about tonight. I don't want to. And I, of course, would prefer to maintain all of these positions, but that was my humble effort at trying to continue to prioritize our schools. But I will provide the information that, that, Mrs. Rizzi, you asked for, and then, of course, the board can decide how to proceed on Monday.
Thank you. Dr. Harris Muhammad.
Yes, ma'am. Very quickly, Mr. Cameras, can you share with the school board if the directors that supervise these positions that are up for discussion to be rifled, if they were notified? And if they were notified, did they share out about these suggestive positions being rifled?
I would have to confer with, with a number of different folks on that question, so I'll explore.
So just a quick follow-up. So you have to follow up with a number of people to determine if communication involved the directors to determine if the positions that they supervise were being rifled?
Let me be very clear.
I'm, I'm just trying to, what, and let me also be clear. I am just trying to determine if processes and procedures that we constantly talk about were put in place, if the directors were not notified, that's a yes or a no. Then my next, my follow-up was going to be, why not? Right? So the questions and the type of questions and the level of questions that I asked from Dr. Sean Harris Muhammad are not new. If they were not a part of the conversation, and let's go back, this conversation is not new, and I'm saying it as calmly as I can. When we do not communicate with people who directly are involved with positions that are being discussed to be rifled, the school board is gunned for. And we have to be able to explain on all levels if a process for Person A and process for Person B was equitable, was it not? Was it fair? What happened? And so that should be an easy yes or no. If it wasn't, then we need to address it. If it was, that's cool. Let's move on. But to come back and say, let me be clear, is a signal for me that it wasn't done. If it was done, I support that. Not the positions being rifled, but I support the tier level of communication. Either we did it or we did not. This is not new.
Yes. Mr. Cameras, are you responding or, you know?
I will briefly respond and say that everything was done properly and in accordance with our procedures. I also want to note, nobody was told that they are rifled. They were, they were told that they were subject to a possible RIF pending school board action. And that is exactly what the letters those individuals perceived from the talent office.
Yeah, I have a comment. You know, I appreciate Dr. Harris Muhammad's question because just before she asked it, you, you mentioned that you had conferred with people regarding who or what positions they felt they could, you know, if they had to, you know, do away with, essentially. And I was assuming when you said you conferred with people, you were referring to the directors. So I mean, I think I appreciate that question. Yeah.
Yes. So these kinds of decisions are made by chiefs. I asked each of them to review their budgets and to come up with proposals for both personnel and non-personnel cuts. Some of those, some of those were relatively simple, given that there were vacancies. Some of those were more complex. And so I asked each of them to review their budgets and come up with those recommendations. And then those recommendations were communicated.
I'm going to bring this, I'm sorry, I'm going to bring this back up on Monday. I'm not, because of time and respect for time, and I want to adhere to it, I'm not going to continue to unpack this, but I'm coming on Monday to unpack it and to address it and to domestify it because I'm coming on Monday.
All right, thank you. Colleagues, are we ready to move to the CIP investments? All right. Mr. Cameras.
I defer to the board on whether to include these or not or to change. I just need guidance.
Ms. Deion.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair. My observation relevant to CIP isn't terribly unlike Ms. Gibson's a moment ago, and specifically pertains to prioritization. But I really want to introduce a different kind of conversation that is related, but I need to acknowledge a different. So, Madam Chair, thanks for indulging. I will be brief, but my point is to say that we will soon be, or at least we can soon anticipate receipt of $200 million refer, in the context of $200 million in context referent in the context of $200 million in context of city CIP. Initially, the objective related to, and board colleagues will recall, we adopted a resolution pertinent to construction of not one, but, but three schools. I, a new George With, a new current technical high school to be located at Murray and Route One. We affectionately refer to as Altria Building, thanks to the bequest of said facility. And then lastly, a new and/or renovated Woodville Elementary. Of course, that all preceded that unfortunate circumstance a year ago, i.e. at Fox. So my, my observation and a request to my colleagues for conversation, imminent conversation, not this evening, of course, but relates to, we know we're gonna spend a significant sum of money at George With. The projection is $154 million. Ms. Gibson, before she needed to step out, spoke to shortfall, anticipated shortfall and money's pertinent to Fox. Let's just call that 16 million. That gets us to 170 million of 100, of 200, leaving a balance of 30 million for construction of, again, not one, but two schools. I, a new current technical high school for presumably 1,000 students, at least. That seems to be some consensus on the board. And then a new and/or renovated Woodville Elementary. But we're all adults on the stage, and we know that that's not even close. $30 million is not even close to what's requisite for those two facilities. So my observation and to connect the dots relates to our CIP dollars and proposal the superintendent has introduced. If perhaps we need to instead prioritize, the granite's little apples and oranges, superintendent. I acknowledge that. But if we need to prioritize the build out or rehab, however we're gonna describe it, at the Altria Building and/or a new or renovated Woodville Elementary, because both are projects. If we choose not to adopt, if we choose not to adopt Jonathan's proposal relevant to closure consolidation, then it's, and it seems to me that it would only be right for this board to honor our commitment to instead ensure the students and the teachers at Woodville have a, have a new space and a renovated space. But because of the expenditure relevant to With and Fox, that's highly unlikely. Thank you, Madam Chair.
All right, so we've got Dr. Harris Muhammad, Ms. Page. Mr. Cameras, did you want to go or just?
Mr. Cameras, do we have a survey or anything indicating that the staff and the community wanted, and the students wanted to resurface the tennis courts or get new tennis courts at Henderson Middle School?
Time.
I don't have a survey, I don't know of a survey. This was based on our effort to invest in athletics across the city as a multi-pronged effort, both to improve physical and mental health, improve attendance, and ultimately, student outcomes. Obviously, students can only experience the amenities that are available to them. And so this was an effort to expand that opportunity for the young people there. But again, I'm happy to change anything in this proposal. I just need clarity from the board as to the direction that they would like to go.
Thank you, colleagues. I just want to note that it's 8:04. You know, I, I'd like to offer a little context where tennis is concerned, you know, because my, you know, I, I don't necessarily play, but I'm very engaged with the tennis community in Richmond. I think the argument is that in a city that gave us Arthur Ashe, there is not a single high school tennis program at RPS. And that, that's really a deep shame. And I think the argument was that if we allowed or like gave our younger kids access to tennis courts, that there would be a way to build a tennis program so that we would be able to, you know, field a really, you know, a viable high school program. And, 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 you know, that is, it's not an exaggeration. There is not one high school tennis team in the city. So I think that that was the rationale for this. I, I am agnostic in terms of where you proceed as a board, but I thought I would add that context. Ms. White.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just had two questions, Mr. Cameras, going back on the Tom Henderson. It said, upgrade classrooms. Is that to provide doors on the classroom, this $500,000?
No, ma'am, that's just the lighting. It's very dark in the school. To add walls at Henderson, I think would be several million dollars. As a parent of two Henderson students, and I know you are as well, I would be thrilled to have walls there and at Francis. And I'm happy to put forth that as our request. I do want to note, in the current fiscal year, we received about 2.5 million in CIP funds. The proposal before you is 9.5. So I think the challenge we're grappling with is our needs are legion and our resources are scarce. And so I don't think there's any disagreement about all the things we want to do. If the board would like me to add another five to seven million to this request, to add walls to Henderson and Francis, I'm happy to do so. I think we will be back here in a couple of months just cutting everything that we just added. So I'm trying to thread the needle between expressing our needs and some bounding of what is realistic. But again, ultimately, I will do as, as the board decides. And so if the board wants to get rid of the tennis courts, so be it. I just need, I need to know to prepare the budget for you for Monday.
The follow-up question, all I just wanted to know was, those were the, was the upgrade classrooms for the walls? And my other question was, because I'm looking at the different categories, and most of these things, like the walls, they didn't have walls in the 70s there either. But they installed the stadium lights, they've been out for a long time also. They used to have portable lights there. And the community did not like the lights shining in their homes. So what I wanted to know, have we coordinated with the community? Because I'm looking at both causes, 750,000, 950,000. Both of them need lights, yes. John Marshall, as a parent, my son played on the football team, but he couldn't play none of his home games there. And I was upset as a parent because I didn't feel my child needed to go out every game in the country to play a game when he's right here in RPS. So I would like more information. When we install stadium lights, are they portable lights? Or are we putting them in the ground as lights?
Those would be permanent lights.
Ms. Page.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I support the proposed CIP investments. These investments, they range from athletics, HVAC, paving, playgrounds, structural. We have kicked this can down the road for so, for decades. And we have never received their appropriate amount of funding in our CIP budget. And, you know, we talk about tennis courts. We can expose our children to playing tennis if we don't have the facility in place to expose them to that opportunity. Just an example. Again, I refuse to kick this can down the road. We have done this, I have seen boards, I have been on boards that have kicked this can year after year after year. And trust and believe, we still not gonna get probably the nine-point-so million dollars. So we probably will have to be making cuts anyway. But my point is, I support this, and I'm, I refuse to kick the can down the road. Thank you.
Thank you. Have we reached the end of the discussion, colleagues?
We done.
All right, one more call? All right, then, as far as everyone is concerned, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.